This time I call their meeting to order. It is six oh one. Uh, please stand for a pledge of allegiance to the flag.
Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And roll call, please.
Yes, good evening, Mayor Proton and Council. Before we begin tonight's meeting, I need to state that Mayor Courtney and Councilmember Cruz will be joining this closed session by Zoom, utilizing the reasonable accommodation and just cause under the Brown Act. And with that, all members are present.
Okay, thank you. Uh, participation is invited. If you wish to hear any item on the agenda, please so indicated by filling out the speaker's request card and hand it to the city clerk prior to the agenda item being addressed. If any special accommodations are required, forty-eight hour notice must be given to the city clerk. Uh, code of ethic. As your electing governing board, we are remind- remember that the code of ethic, that we are voluntary and unanimously approved during the meeting. We will treat each other and the public with pa- patient facility and courtesy. The decision made tonight will be for the benefit of the Barstow community and not for personal gain. Public comments, closed session. This is time and place for general public to address the governing board on matters of the closed session agenda within the city jurisdiction. Speakers are asked to limit their comments to three minutes or less. All requests to speak must be received prior to the agenda item being addressed. If special accommodation are required, forty-eight hour notice must be given to the city clerk. Uh, city clerk, do we have any public comments?
We have no co- comment.
Okay, I entertain the motion that we go into closed session.
So moved.
Second.
And ready to vote.
And motion passes unanimously.
Alright, we're now in closed session to, uh, for two items. Uh, it is six oh four.
Are you ready? City Clerk, okay. All right, go ahead. Put it out on closed session.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Temp. The Council met in closed session and considered two items. One regarding a potential litigation against the city related to facts and circumstances the city believes that may result in litigation but which are not yet known to potential plaintiff or plaintiffs, and regarding public employment for the interim city manager and city manager employee titles. The council provided direction to staff and council and took no reportable action. We are expecting a special meeting to consider a possible Los Coyotes agreement Monday, October 28th at 6:00 PM regarding a potential casino off I-15 with the Los Coyotes tribe. So that'll be again October 28th, 6:00 PM Monday here in chambers. Agenda and so forth to follow. Back to you.
Okay, thank you. We'll close the closed session. It is 7:51. At this time, I'd like to call the order to the regular meeting, which is at 7:52. This time, we have invocation. I'll give invocation and pleasure of leisure. Okay, please stand for the pleasure of leisure.
Please join me as we...
I'll do invocation. I'll do invocation. Most heavenly gracious, Father, we come before you this evening to say thank you. Thank you for waking us up this morning. Thank you for allowing us to be here in your midst. Father God, we ask that you watch over each and every one of us as we continue our meeting this evening and continue to watch over our sick and shelling and put your loving arms around them and protect them. Father God, we ask this in your name, we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Our congratulations to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible...
Individual with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. This time, can we have rule call?
Yes, before we begin tonight's meeting, I need to state that Councilmember Cruz will be joining this regular meeting by Zoom utilizing the reasonable accommodation under Attorney General Opinion 23-1002 under the Brown Act.
All right, thank you. This time, a couple of readings here. Participating participation to invite. If you wish to be heard on any item on the agenda, including any item on the closed consent calendar, please so indicated by filling out a speaker's request card and hand it to the city clerk prior to the agenda item being addressed. If any special accommodations is required, 48-hour notice must be given to the city clerk. Code of Ethics. As your elected governing board, we will remember that the code of ethics and that we are voluntary and unanimously approved during the meeting, we will treat each other and the public with patience, liberty, and courtesy. The decision made tonight will be for the benefit of the Barstow community and not for personal gain. Review and approve of the agenda. It is that time for members of the governing board to call the rearrangement of the orders of the agenda and adding items to or removing items from the agenda, or removing items from the consent calendar for discussion or separate actions. Items may be only added to the agenda to allow by the state law, including governing code session 54954.2 subdivision B, allowing emergency items to be added by the majority of vote and allowing the items that arose to the city attention after agenda items have been posted in deadline, but which requires immediate action to be added by a two-third vote of the city council members present at the meeting or less than two-thirds of the council members are present. A unanimous vote of those members present. And...
Mayor Pro Temp.
Okay.
I'd like to go ahead and pull items number five and seven.
For five and seven. Any other item? Okay. So move. Move to approve the agenda as presented.
And I'll second.
All right, ready to vote?
Before we vote, also, I need to make a mention on item four. The minutes for the October 7th meeting has some date and time and some spelling errors that staff has now corrected, and the minutes reflect those changes.
Okay, thank you.
And Councilmember Cruz, how do you vote?
Is she on there?
Yes. Thank you.
All right.
So motion has approved to, to motion to approve the agenda with the corrections to items four and pulling items five and seven.
Okay, let's move on to presentation. Update for Public Works project. This is a presentation only. Public Works Superintendent Tom.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Temp. Thank you, guys, for having me here tonight. Thank you to the city council and thank you to city staff. Thank you to the community that is here tonight. I'm going to talk about several projects that Public Works has going on at this time and funded by Measure Q. It's important to know that these, that these projects couldn't happen without Measure Q because the projects that I'm going to talk about tonight, they're, the cost of doing business today is very, very expensive. So I'm very thankful that Measure Q can be able to fund these, these projects. So moving on to the first slide. There's four locations that are in front of you. We have Jasper Park, we have Sports Park, we have Cora Harper Gym, and we have Henderson Pool. If you notice, we have green check marks next to the, the items that have been completed. For instance, Jasper Park, we've installed a new roof, we restuckled the building, we removed the acoustic ceiling, textured the walls and the ceiling, we boarded up the windows that were there. Solar lighting has, has been purchased for the basketball courts and for the playground. And we've installed an alarm system to protect what we have invested and what we have put into the building. We also replaced the furnace, and we also did some remodeling to the ADA restrooms that weren't compliant. So those are a few things that we have done to Jasper Park, and the ones that are not in a green check mark, you can, those are still pending projects based on the crafts that need to go in there accordingly. The sports park, we've completed the upper and lower drinking fountains, the wiring loom and the light poles, and that was important for the wiring looms. They are original to the park, and they have aged, and so it was important to replace each wiring loom and each of the poles so we can have the proper illuminations to the field. We did purchase a new bunker rake. The upper and lower red and blue fields were remediated, meaning where the clay and the grass meet each other, we had a dangerous hump there, and so that was removed and so that way it can make playing baseball there safe. We did add some additional clay because up there at the sports park, it gets really windy and it takes the fines out of the clay, and then we're just with granular clay. So the ones without the check marks for the sports park, we're still working on currently. We're, those are scheduled to be, to be repaired. Cora Harper, as we all know, it's closed based on we don't have the appropriate air conditioning in there, but that's also being worked on. During the, during that process, we've replaced the refrigerator, we bought a food warming cabinet for it, for all the events that are there, a steam table as well for the events. We did purchase a new stage because the stage came with the building, and I believe it's original to the building. I've been here 30 years, I have not seen a different stage. That's been original for the last 30 years. The men's and women's sauna has been redone. It was original to the building as well, so we got a brand new sauna there. The high traffic door was placed in the front of the entrance of the Cora Harper Center. We get, get a lot of traffic there, so we had to upgrade the, the mechanical system to that door. We did replace all the exterior lighting on the outside of the building as well as the parking lot. I'm sure you guys notice it now at night that it's pretty bright now, and so we're trying to prevent illegal campers in the back of the building. So that, that's also working as well. We don't have any illegal camping in the back. Henderson Pool. The sand filters, they've been probably more than 10 years with the original sand. We upgraded the, we replaced the sand, but we used a glass media. It seems to work better, it's more efficient for, for filtration, so we, we added the glass media into the filters. We have upgraded the pool system controllers, which they work 24 hours a day, and so it adds wear and tear to those controllers, so it was time to replace those as well. The pump was also replaced for the kiddie pool. It's a pretty good-sized pump, but that, that was also replaced. We haven't repaired the awning just yet. We're looking into different... We haven't repaired the awning just yet, we're looking into different pricing for that because it's very expensive. But we did repair some of the, in the pool lights. Some of them are still, need to be diagnosed, and I think we're only one short from the pool lighting not being completely lit. We do have outdated bathrooms in there, changing rooms, they're original to the building. Those need to be upgraded as well. And again, the awning parallel to the building, that got destroyed a few years ago when we had the high winds, the high winds picked it up and damaged the whole thing. Moving to the next slide, we have Lilian Park. Lilian Park, out of all of these eight parks are, is the one that has further progress. Same thing with the fields, we had the, a terrible hump there, we hired somebody to come in, put new clay, and they put about 10 feet of sod, brand-new sod from third base all the way around to first base. We upgraded the snack bar. We took down the announcer's booth, and we just put, placed it with a brand-new flat roof, new roof on that. We did the storage room as well, for that way the, the league can have storage for their equipment in preparation of the fields and so on for the games. We raised the dugouts. The dugouts were the old-school type, and we had campers in there as well. We had bad, bad activity as well, and it was time to raise them up to, so that we can see who's in the dugouts. The snack bar electrical, that was probably original to the building, in a sense, some, some, there was some repairs there, but we went in, we had Edison defuse the building, we put a brand-new breaker box cabinet in there, and then we upgraded all the receptacles in there. The other one, it had a sliding door for the snack bar. We called a company in to put a roll-up door, and that secured the building. We have to protect what we're investing inside the building, so we feel confident that we secured it pretty well. A new refrigerator as well was purchased for that, and also solar lighting. The reason why you're going to see solar lighting in the next, this park and the next few parks is because we can't trench into the existing ground there because we don't have blueprints, or we don't have any drawings or details to what's in the ground, and we don't want to tear up any of the irrigation or any of the wires to the controller and to the, the stations that water the grass out there. So we got to be very careful. So, we did purchase solar lighting for this park as well. Dana Park, we put a brand-new HVAC system on the building there, as we know is at taut time. That's got a brand-new HVAC system. Right now, we're taking bids for the LED, LED lighting for the tennis courts. Unfortunately, we had some bad activity that damaged the, the infrastructure, the electrical wires, the control panel, so we're looking at replacing the whole entire thing from the meter to the courts. We want to replace the programmable marquee sign. If you guys remember, it does have a sign up there, but it's pretty old, so we would like to get a new one to inform the community, and, you know, for community announcements so we can keep the community aware of what's happening in our town. FOCUSin' Park, we did, we also bought solar lighting because we want it to be evening-friendly, after-hours friendly when it's dark. And we also have, right now, we're also working on replacing the lighting for the baseball fields there. In the past week, if you noticed, we removed the telephone poles that were there, we removed some of the old lighting, we're going to take down some pine trees because from what I understand, the field's a little bit short, so we're going to extend the fence a little bit, so that way it is, it is up to standards, and then, then it'll be supported with a new LED lighting. Then the Senior Center. We just completed the makeup, makeup air system just last week. They're still working out some details on that system, but I was there today, and to me, it, it seems like it's, it's working great. It's working really great. But there's some small details that still need to be worked out there, so we'll, we'll continue that, and we should have that wrapped up by next week. Back to Jasper Park. We're upgrading the restrooms, like I had mentioned earlier, that they need to meet ADA standards. Whoever's been in the building would understand that it didn't meet ADA standards, but the city is looking into their, all their facilities to upgrade these things, and that's one of the things we're upgrading. Again, I mentioned the drinking fountain, it's upgraded drinking fountain there, new paint, new floor. They didn't have carbon monoxide and smoke detectors, so those are also be placed in there. I'm working with Mr. Haldrith for the ADA parking because right now, it's just wherever you can park is, it would be convenient. The basketball courts, we would like to get them painted like we did down in Sternicle Park, we would like to get that painted as well, and then add some shade canopies because there's only one there. There's only one shade canopy for the whole park. We do have some trees there, but they're probably original to the park, and those also need to be replaced as well. Again, we want to add some benches, trashcans, and more trees as, as it stated in the slide. Sports Park. Sports Park is a pretty big complex, that's a 26-acre complex. We do want to replace the batting, the batting net, we do have it at the courtyard, it's just affording the, the labor. The labor is, is a little bit costly based on, they want, they want us to pair up with them to have it installed, but we're, we're going to figure that, figure that out so we can get the, the brand-new net up. The pitching machines, we're also going to work on those so we can get them back to the baseball players that go there and that need the practice to sharpen their, their batting, so we're going to also work on that. The appliances up in the, up in the snack bars, the lower and the, and the upper, they're also dated to the year that it was built, so we need to get those replaced as well. The water heaters, the, they're the old-style water heaters, I think they're 70-gallon water heaters, we want to go to tankless, and then we want to upgrade the restrooms as well. The restrooms are original to the build, and we want to upgrade those. Again, as mentioned earlier, we repair the upper and lower field, the fields, I'm going to get a drink of water. We replace those upper and lower fields where the clay meets the grass, and we've had talks about putting in a splash pad. So we're interested on location of where we, where it'd be best effective for the splash pad, but there is talks of placing a splash pad there. Cora Harper Gymnasium, as you can see in one of the pictures, that stove there is pretty aged, we're going to replace that as well. The chiller, the three air handlers, Chris and his team, along with the mechanical engineers, they developed a whole brand-new system where it's all going to be tied in as one. We do have heaters in the gym, which those will no longer be, be used, that'll be part of the, the new system, so that way we can get it open back to the public. Again, back to this, the events that are held there, we want the kitchen to be able to help the caters when they come in, or help any of the families that, that rent the, the gym, so that way they can have a, a nice event. So we're, we're working on ice machine, the range oven, the, the refrigerator that was already there. We're just making, upgrading a lot of things in there. The gym floor also needs repair, we're going to go in there and resurface that, or we hired a contractor that's going to go in and resurface that, paint the new lines, and then put a new varnish on it. So, those are the things we're working on at the community center. Henderson Pool, I mentioned that we do need to upgrade the awning, we have one awning there that's still original to the build, that also needs to be upgraded. We would like to put an awning over the kiddie pool, that way when the kids are there, we're, they're not just in the heat, they have some shade while they're in the kiddie pool. Again, the restrooms, the changing room areas, they didn't, they do not meet ADA standards. Also, there's been talk of placing a splash pad there instead of having a kiddie pool, that's based on, we need some input from the community, what would the community appreciate there? And then I'm also going to replace the parking lot LED, to LED lights. The parking lot lights are very, very low, and with today's lumens, we're going to brighten it up just like I did the community center. Lilian Park, we're really close to being done with Lilian Park. We had a great event, as you can see in the picture, we have our, our city manager, we have Mayor Pro Temp there, we have Carmen Hernandez, and we all, we had all the council members there, to be honest, to cut the ribbon and, and celebrate all this work that has been done, and then turn it over to the, the kids that were going to play that day. So it was very, very exciting to do that during the, the completion of all these projects. Again, we want to put a brand-new marquee sign down towards the bottom of Lilian and Adele. We want to put additional parking because these events attract a lot of, a lot of parents and, and kids to participate in these events. And then the trees as well, the trees, they're very, very old, they're probably original to the park, and the benches and trashcans, if we put an additional parking lot, those will also be relocated. Dana Park. Dana Park is probably one of our most frequent parks, but it, it receives a lot of damage to the bathrooms. Park maintenance can go in there one day, next day, damage it again. They'll go in there and do the maintenance, and then it'll get damaged again. So it's, it's a vicious cycle of bad actors in this community that doesn't allow park maintenance, park staff to provide better maintenance to the other parks when we have to spend so much time repairing the bathrooms based on the bad actors. But it's a great park. We're looking at resurfacing the, the tennis courts, we're going to add some pickleball courts in there. We do need to replace the LED lighting. The police department did a great job in responding because they found some bad actors in this community stealing the wire during the day, they made the arrest, and so with that said, the LED lighting's going to, it's going to cost, it's going to cost some money. We all, like, like I mentioned before, the marquee sign on Barstow Road, we would like to replace that. We have new LED lights for the Dana Park parking lot because it is very dark there, and we want to upgrade the appliances there as well. So across the street, we have the big gym for big events, we would like to use the PAL Center for medium-sized events, and that's what we're, we're aiming towards. FOCUSin' Park, as you can see there, the man lift is taking down the old telephone poles that are original to FOCUSin' Park. We have a contractor going to come in and put brand-new lighting in both fields. Again, we're going to extend the outfield fence to meet the, the standards for the Little League tournaments that need to happen there. The snack bar, we're going to do the snack bar, we're going to demo the snack bar just like we did Lilian Park, and we're going to remove the upper concession stands and put a brand-new roof, and replace all the appliance, and roll-up door, and make it a really, really presentable snack bar for the community. Also, there's tree replacement that needs to happen there, and additional benches and trashcans as well. Senior Center, we just completed the makeup air system last week. They were out of a makeup air system for a little bit, I can't remember how long it was, but this was a task for the contractor who installed it. We had a few contractors walk away because it was just that intense of trying to fit that big unit in a small place. Luckily, we are the contractor that did it, he had confidence in his ability to get it up there. It was put in place, but it wasn't right. So what they did was they built a, a three-foot stand underneath it to raise it, so that way for future maintenance, we can have access to the, to the cooler pad that you can see in the picture, or to the heating side of the, of where the, the filters are for the HVAC. But it's up and running, we're there, we got to do some other little miscellaneous other things, but we're really happy that this is, was completed for the seniors, for the Senior Center. They serve the High Desert Meals on Wheels. Their coverage is pretty extensive, it's, it's really wide, and you'd be impressed of how many meals they, they put out of that kitchen. For Measure Q employees, we have one in fleet, three in public service, we're looking to add a lead worker, and we're looking to add three in parks. Hopefully, moving into mid-year, we can accomplish these things. We do have a lot of work for, for the amount of staff we have, but we're, we're doing the best we can. And with the help with, of others departments in the city, we don't do it by ourselves, we, we have other departments assist us in certain things for us to accomplish what we accomplish outside. And that's it for my presentation, and I apologize because this is my first presentation. As you can see, I'm nervous, but there's just a lot of information in what I just covered. There's a lot more that was done for Measure Q funding, it's just to cover it all in one night, it's just, it's, I'd have you guys here a long time. But thank you for allowing me to present this to you guys, and I will leave it at that.
Hey, thank you, Tom. Any council question? You have a question? Okay.
We do have public comment on this.
Okay.
Our first speaker is Mr. Leonard.
No, no, let me, let me, let me get counsel first.
Mr. Alba, I want to thank you for a, a really nice PowerPoint. I have asked in past, and I'm going to ask it again, is that when we do have a PowerPoint, this is to Mr. Haldrith tonight, is that we get a hard copy in front of us? Because to take notes, that's the best way to take notes so I can ask my questions, you know, in the slides. So I would appreciate, first of all, if we could get a copy of this after, but in future, can we please get a hard copy on any PowerPoint presentations for note-taking? I do have a couple of questions. First of all, I'm going to jump to the Cora Harper first. You said that we were, are currently closed, closed to the public. What I don't like is that we're picking and choosing who we're closed to, because we just had an event for the parade dignitaires. We were open for that, but we're closed to the public, so I can't say that we're closed because we, we really shouldn't be picking and choosing. It was good enough to have all the dignitaires there with, with a nice dinner, and because it's cooling down, I personally didn't feel the effect of it being so hot in there. Going to the Sports Park. Can you explain to me, because I think I know what it is, but I'd like to hear it? What is a bunker rake? Is that the thing that rakes the field?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
It's one of those three-wheelers that drags the field and preps the clay before play.
It's my understanding too that a John Deere had been, has been repaired because the damages were, were the result of a reckless driving at the Sports Park, but that wasn't in the report. Is there a reason why that wasn't listed in the report?
I couldn't tell you why, well, I didn't think it was relevant to the projects that we're doing. It wasn't a bunker rake, they got, was part of the accident, it was a, a gator which is used for transport of supplies or to get staff from the upper part to the lower part, so those are two different types of machines.
Okay. My next question is, because I've, I've been up to the Sports Park, and I haven't been up there for about a week now, but there was a big pile of sand in the upper fields. It's, it's a huge, and it's, so going in for where the track or the cross-country happens, you go up that little side by the hills, you go into a side gate, there's a big pile of sand that's been there for quite some time. Is there a plan, or has that been taken care of since last week? Is there a plan, if it hasn't, for that big pile of sand that's between the two fields?
I believe that, that pile there is for, when there's erosion to the, to the banks of the property, they use it, that we keep it centrally located, if that's the pile of sand that you're referring to.
It's open for the children to play on, and that's one of my concerns, is that if that's the reason why it's there, I don't know what the... I don't know what the protocol is, but I, I would think that that, there would be some safety concerns. Thank you. So moving on to Lilian Park, you talked about tearing down the announcer booth. And I know that the Little League had their PA system there and I believe they've replaced the PA system themselves. And the PA system is being handled a different way other than what it, where's our scoreboard? Is my question.
So we have both scoreboards down at the Corporation Yard. One was not working and the other one, they, at the time, they told me Foggson was working. So we took Foggson scoreboard over to Lilian in hopes that it would work for the league over there. But it also had some problems as well.
So where are we on fixing that?
Well, we haven't discussed that yet. We're still trying to repair the infrastructure. We are gonna cross that bridge. I, we have a scoreboard, I believe it's outfield, which is probably original too. But it's what's best for the, the league. Do we need it outfield or do we need it back on the building?
I just think we need it. I know when my children played and when my grandchildren play, you know, I wanna hear what other children like, oh, my god, number 10, you know, Mr. Tommy Alva Jr. just, you know, hit a double. And, you know, in the 50-50 and everything that goes with the game itself. Every other city makes those accommodations. They, they ensure that we have that. And I really would like for us to, to get that fixed because we just hosted, we just hosted, what was it, All-Stars at Lilian? And I just really wish that we would've been like other cities. They made it big, not that we didn't, but there was some components that were missing. And I, and I'd like to see us again, go back to the basics of announcing, being able to announce, being able to see what the score is because so many people were yelling at the Umps, what, what's the score? You know, that, that detours from the game itself, in my opinion. So I just needed to know about that. Dana Park, moving on to Dana Park, the trees were just recently trimmed. And I didn't see, actually on the list, but, and we'll come to the costs in a little bit. Because we outsourced that work, which I think it's amazing. First of all, I wanna commend you and the staff because you are overworked and there's so much you can do in a day. This is not putting any of the staff down. I commend everybody that works 24/7 on the weekends as well to get what we need to get done for our city. You are understaffed. And that should be priority for, for our city manager to ensure that we are bringing the staff to full capacity to ensure that we can do more. But we need more help. You need more help. So I just wanna make that very clear. So there was, again, the trees were trimmed on, on that one. Foggson, you're gonna add the lights and extend the fields. The trees out there will need to be trimmed. And I don't know if you have the manpower to do it, if we're gonna use the same company out of Anaheim to do that. You know, I don't know what that plan is.
So the, we have those massive pine trees between the two fields.
Mm-hmm.
Those are coming down. And so what we're talking about is putting shade structure in between the two fields.
So the shade structure, would that be something that would be durable through the years? Or is it something that we would have to replace every couple of years?
They would mirror the same shade structures that are on the east part of the park. We have two shade structures there.
Okay.
They would mirror those.
So, again, I like the PowerPoint, but it gave us no costs. And we're talking about Measure Q funds, has no costs attached to it. And this is a great wish list, a huge wish list that we all wish that we could just magically happen and tomorrow it's all done. But some of it was, we already got this done, we're wanting to get this done. I personally would like to get a second to do a workshop specifically for, for this topic. A workshop where we can actually break it down per park. How much has it already cost the taxpayers, Measure Q funds, on what's already been done? And how much are we looking that it would cost to complete our wish list? And how many years would it take to do this? Because as a taxpayer, I want to know where my money is going. And I believe everybody out there would like to know where, where Measure Q funds are going. Again, I love the presentation, but that's the hugest component that's missing. First of all, what's been completed, what's the cost and what hasn't been completed and what's the cost? And again, the timeframes. Priorities should be also at the top of the list, in my opinion, priorities per park. What's the most critical safety issue? Obviously, the trees are right now because I know that some limbs have fallen and have hurt individuals. Those should be priority. Priorities are all over the place, but I, I would like to see the priorities broken down as to how we're addressing this. And again, it's not my job to tell you what to do, but this is how I perceive it is that this is not enough for me. I, I want more detail. And it all goes back to costs, the costs and can we afford it? Because I don't wanna deplete Measure Q on just the parks because it was meant for a lot of other things. And splash pads, go to that. So splash pads, I've seen that we, we talk about two different areas where we could do it. Well, that's a great, if we can pull from Measure Q, but you know what? We have community funds and that's exactly what that money should be used for, is for our community. Splash pads have been thrown out there and we have money that we haven't, well, they tried to decide where we were gonna spend it and that was all gonna go to the city. Not gonna happen. That goes to the community. And this is where this money should go, is to putting the splash pads out there, giving it back to our kids, giving it back to our community. That's why the money was there for. And I believe that's all I have to say about this subject right now.
All right, Tom, just one question on the, back to the sports park, the shade cover for where the basketball goes and stuff like that. Are we planning on putting something up there? The one that we have up there is probably half towed down. Are we looking to replace that?
Well, that's a great question. I wanna say, two years ago, we walked it with Brad Merrill and some structural engineers. They looked at it and it's not structural sound right now. So if we put a brand-new vinyl over it, the structure that is there will not be able to support the new vinyl. Right now, it is in horrible shape. I, I, I know it's an eyesore. But in order to replace that whole pavilion, that's pretty costly.
Okay, so, so then I, I concur with Councilman Rose. Then, then we need to probably do a workshop to figure out, how can we purchase something like that or what do we have to do in order to fix that? Because I know when I go up there and I see those kids out there playing basketball and stuff and there's no shade cover whatsoever, I think we, we can do better. And so let's, let's look at what we can do to try and enhance that, to fix it to where we can get some shade cover. I've been preaching that on the bus stops and stuff. But when we, when we start talking about sports and stuff, we're talking about kids out there hydrating and this and that in the sun. We need something like that. So let's, let's take a look at that.
Yes, sir. And, and just like Councilmember Rose had mentioned, where is priority? What is priority? And so we try to do our best and, and address all the priorities. So yes, we can have, have to talk about that.
Yes, yeah, go ahead.
I wanna thank you because this was a lot of work to put forward. And so, so there is a first and a second to do a workshop. But we have to pinpoint a workshop because we can say a workshop and then it gets forgotten, it gets pushed down the road. So I would like to get the workshop done and, you know, we need to give the staff ample time to put this together. Working with finance, I think that finance can probably throw those numbers down pretty quick on what we've spent so far in Measure Q. But then the analysis of how much it'll cost for our wish list. But Mr. Alba, how long do you think it would, do you need a little time? But I don't want to set you up for failure to say we want it in one week. That's not reasonable. How much along, how much time do you think you would need to, of course, working with the, the city manager and Jim City Manager, how long do you think it would take to get a workshop put together within reason?
Well, based on conversation today with Sidney Harris, their department is working hard at this time. I would have to, because to bring up all the costs, I would have to refer back to finance.
Well, if I could jump. Yeah, we're, I would say you're, you're looking at 30 days to be able to compile some information. The biggest issue is, is going back and tracking every dollar that we spent on, on the parks. We, we do have an assessment that's already been done over the last couple of years on all the parks and the deficiencies are in excess of $30 million. So that's the reality of it unfortunately, is that the deficiencies far outweigh the, the budget that would ever be allocated. But I do believe in, in identifying all the deficiencies and then working towards a priority list. You know, what my priority is, is different from, from other people because I favor one sport than the other one. But I, I think that tracking down every dollar that was spent is gonna take some time. I don't know if we'll be able to have that for you, but I think that we can put together a workshop specifically on all the deficiencies and then a rough cost of what it would be.
I, how much time, Sidney, would it take? Because that workshop would be a waste of time. I wanna know costs and I know that we have budget line items that we can identify. We should be able to identify those relatively quick because you just identified those line items and you go back last fiscal year. I know enough about budgets that we could be able to do that relatively quick.
We do have our Measure Q budget that does outline in detail some of the repairs that Tommy spoke of. But the issue is that there are repairs that have gone over several fiscal years that they've kind of lined in, lined up in a priority. So some of those that they've been working on for years on end, we would need to go back and try to figure out, you know, if we, those were finished, if they've been moved to a different budget. And we have used more than just Measure Q budget on several of those projects. So I also wanted to say that I believe that our city manager was working on a priority list for Measure Q funds. I know that he's spoken with several departments, fire in particular, to try to outline some of these priorities so that he can have a presentation for you all, kind of as part of his, I guess, legacy. So I do know that there is something already in the works that he's planning to bring to council soon.
Okay, so I.
I could suggest perhaps four to six weeks would be sufficient time, putting together what I'm hearing.
Four to six weeks is fine, but we need to identify a date. Again, I don't wanna have a workshop without those numbers. Thank you. And four to six weeks is looking at what timeframe, Matthew, if you've got your calendar?
That takes us to the end of November. So I would wanna.
Are we closed, the, is the city closed the week of Thanksgiving? Because if so, I'd like to push it up to the third week of November, the 18th, somewhere around that timeframe.
I defer to the council on that. I think staff's, I'm not sure if the entire city was closed that week, but certainly any staff take vacation then.
I'd still, because it's Thanksgiving week.
Yeah.
I'd like to, I'd like to aim for the week of November 18th, if that's okay with the council?
I defer to the council.
I'm okay.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
All right, any, we had some public comments, okay?
Yes, our first speaker is Mr. Leonard Williams.
This is, was just a presentation only, so.
We are, we're still required to take public comment on the.
So, okay. Got you.
It's listed, I thought I did that. Yeah, it's listed.
Leave it to Mr. Williams.
Thank you, sir. Leonard Williams, Barstow, California. Well, priorities, I know over the years, that's something myself and a few others have worked on with the parks. And they've had priority lists and then they toss them aside. And it depends on who's yelling at them at the time. That priority list goes in the trash. Splash parks, splash pads. Have anybody ever looked at the last analysis we did on splash pads? And where it was gonna go and how much it cost? Do we know? The last time we did, it was 300-some-odd thousand dollars to do a splash pad. So it's easy to talk about it, but it's expensive to do. What I would like to know is the timeline for Cora Harper. I'm told the, everything is approved, but I haven't seen any work done on it yet. I, I seen Jasper Park, I got the information. But Cora Harper, when will it be actually open to the public? Yes, like Ms. Rose, Councilwoman Rose said, we've had events there, but it's not actually open to the public. We would like a timeline. I've heard it'll be done in a couple of months. And by the end of the year, well, we're getting close. I've asked this the last council meeting, what is the timeline for that? And I still haven't gotten the answer. And that's about all. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Williams.
Our next speaker is Mr. John Williams.
Welcome, Mr. Williams.
Thank you, sir. You look good up there. You guys got this little slideshow of my own, right? So I get that we're talking about Measure Q and, and what we're gonna do. But you got an infrastructure problem. And I told Tommy earlier, I think they got the best concrete crew out there now. We can farm them out and make some money in different cities. And everybody knows I'll go around and videotaping everything. But when you look at this of our roads' conditions, and I know it's got nothing to do with Measure Q, but maybe some of it does. As your, your city's falling apart. It's not just, it's not just the parks. Your entire city is falling apart. Matter of fact, Dana Park, you still haven't got that door fixed yet. On the right-hand side, you can't get into it on Dana Park. You can use the left bathroom, you can use the middle bathroom, but you can't use the right one. It's always locked. You got homeless living in it. I gave the chief a way out. Have the police department go down on the morning shift, afternoon shift, and evening shift. That's three times a day. They just go down there and check out the parks. It's in their district, just have them walk it. You got families who can't use the restrooms. You got little girls going into a restroom with a guy inside of there doing all kinds of crazy crap. You talk about you have no way of maintaining these parks. Find a way. Use your police department. I gave you, I, I gave you a way out of it, but you didn't take it. No one cares. You know, we, we run for office and some of us are already elected. Is this what we're giving our citizens? Is this what we promised them? You gotta be freaking kidding me. It, it's embarrassing. It's embarrassing for me to go out there and have to film this stuff. It's, it's just sad. And the problem you're not addressing is the last 10 or 15 years of damage we did to ourselves by not maintaining our stuff is why we're here. I told Tommy, Tommy earlier, this was done under Cindy Profol when she moved the parks staff to public works. You made a mistake. I told you what was gonna happen when you did it. Now it's happened. Move the damn parks back, give your own employees for public works and your problem is solved. But you can't maintain it if you're understaffed. And these guys are pushed to mow lawns faster than they can mow them. They're timed out. It's ridiculous.
Thank you, sir.
That is all the comments we have on the presentation.
Any other discussion? Any others? Okay. All right, moving on to the consent count and public comments. This is the time and place for the general public to address governing board on all matters of the consent calendar. Speaker are asked to limit their comments on all. Speaker are asked to limit their comments on all consent items to three minutes or less. All requirements or to, all requests to speak must be received prior to the agenda item being addressed. If any special accommodation are required, a 48-hour notice must be given to the city clerk. City clerk, we have any public?
We have no comments on our consents that we have on items four and six. So with that, I'll go ahead and read. The minutes for the joint special meeting held October 7th at 5:00 PM, the recommended action is to approve the minutes as corrected. Item six, the resolution 5190-2024 for a temporary street closure within the city of Barstow in accordance with section 21101E of the California Vehicle Code for the Halloween trunk or treat. The recommended action is to adopt resolution number 5190-2024 for a temporary street closure within the city of Barstow in accordance with section 21101E of the California Vehicle Code for the Halloween trunk or treat and waive the full reading. And that is the end of the consent calendar. Mr. Mayor Protam?
All right, thank you. This time I'd like to take a motion on those two items.
So move.
I'll second.
Ready to vote?
Councilmember Cruz, how do you vote?
Yes.
And the motion to approve the consent items four and six has passed.
Okay, item number five was poor community promotion fund application for growing outreach, growing opportunity. And that was pulled by Councilman Rose. I'll let you start off the discussion.
Thank you. So, so I pulled this because I had a couple of questions. I did call the city today and speak to Marybel Hernandez. Because I was wondering about the community promotional fund applications, and I thought that there was a deadline for these applications. Can you explain to me how this works, Ms. Hernandez?
Yes, thank you. So normally, once a year, the city opens up the application process, and normally it happens in July, and we usually close it at the end of July, and then bring the applications at the first meeting in August. So as you recall, at the August 5th meeting, when these applications were brought forward, there was multiple applications that were not completed. And so then council asked us to work with the applicants and then bring them back once the applications were completed. So the one that's before you today was one that was originally submitted, and the reason it was not accepted at the original time was because that same applicant, which was under the High Desert Chapter of Association of U.S. Army, they submitted two applications for two different events. The way the policy reads is that we're only allowed to award one nonprofit organization a maximum of $3,000 per year, and so that amount was already awarded for their Taste of Bayou Mardi Gras event that they host in February. So then the AUS Army had to go back and try to partner up with another nonprofit organization so that we could bring their application forward. So that's what you have before you. So Growing Outreach, Growing Opportunities has partnered up with them so that they can bring their application forward.
So my question would be, so the policy states that it's one application per year, max is 3,000. And I, did the policy say 3,000? I thought it was less.
It's 3,000, but it's at the discretion of the council. The council can award more or less or whatever they see fit. So that's why we, whenever an organization asks for monetary donation, we ask them to provide us a breakdown of their expenses for their event.
Thank you. And I would like to have seen the policy in front of us.
I do have a copy if you'd like.
That should be, always be part of our agenda item, to see the policy, because it's hard to look at this and say, okay, where's the policy? And when we pick this up on Thursday afternoon, we're closed on Friday here at City Hall, and questions sometimes can't be answered on Monday before the meeting. So in saying that, does the policy state that we can partner with one, with a nonprofit, another nonprofit?
Yes, it eligibility requirement says an organization must have a nonprofit status or be partnered with a nonprofit organization to be eligible for funding.
So my, my next question would be, I'm looking at the application. Can you tell me where it says that the growing, the Gogo is partnering with the applicant that had two? How do we tie this to that other applicant? I think this is a great event. Don't get me wrong. I think it's a great event. However, I would like to have disclosure, full disclosure, transparency, that this was a application that was incomplete. All the other incomplete applications have already come through, and now this one's coming through way after the fact.
Right.
And there was, there's no disclosure that they're partnering. I think that we should know that this person is now partnering with, with Gogo.
Right. Well, like I mentioned, this was an application that was brought at the August 5th meeting, and the applicant is here to answer any questions that you.
Well, I'm asking you because you're the one that runs the process, okay?
Correct.
So that's why I'm asking you, Marybel, is that, why did it take so long to get this one to the council when all the other ones were brought to us prior to this? The ones that were incomplete?
And just, we still have one applicant that's, that we're working with to bring them forward to you that was part of the original packet, of the original applications that were brought. Now.
You still have one additional?
Yes, there's one, one more that actually has been, has issues with their nonprofit status, that they're, we're working with them. They've already submitted their paperwork to the IRS, so they're going to provide us letter, providing us proof that they're working on fixing their issue. So that one hopefully will come back here November 5th meeting, or 4th, I'm sorry.
And that other applicant is not on tonight's agenda?
No, and that application's not on tonight's agenda. But on, on this, I mean, I, I can't, I can't tell the applicants how to fill out their application. So if, if that's how they filled it out, then that's how I receive the application.
Right, that we as a council, with all due respect, had asked for the city to do a workshop, because those that are filling out the applications, this could be very scary, the whole process, we've talked about this, could be very scary, and we were supposed to do a workshop to help those applicants to say, here's the workshop, this is how you do it, to help them get to where we need to get. And so I feel bad for the applicants that they were told originally in August to be here, and we had to pull quite a few of them because they were brought to us and they were incomplete. I just want to remind everybody that that happened. They should have never reached the council because we are the bad guys. We had to say, no, we can't approve them because they're incomplete. Now this one, it would have been nice for it to be in some type of report to say, hey, it's coming, because now I'm asking the questions. Had it been in a report and, and it written in here that this was an original application and this is how it transpired? I mean, we have every opportunity to put it in the executive summary to be transparent, the discussion, and then of course, we have the fiscal impact. So we could follow what happened in August to today. So when the next application comes, I would like to see that in the executive summary so that it's transparent as to why are we getting it so late and, and what's occurring there? Again, I just wanted to, you know, I would not have known that Gogo, it's called Gogo, it's Growing Opportunity, Growing Outreach, Growing Opportunities, was tied in with Ms. Renita Wick's original request for this event, unless I would have called today asking the questions.
And on another note also, you know, annually, the city allocates additional funds for applications that come through throughout the fiscal year, just because there's organizations that want to host or do events. And so there is money allocated separate for, you know, these just random events that somebody wants to host to help the community. So it's not like that we cannot accept them after that deadline, but there's only a limited amount of funds.
And our policy should state that. If it doesn't already state it?
Yeah, it does.
That we can continue to, to get them?
Yes.
Okay? And they're not random events. Actually, this was a planned event, and in, I think it's a great event, but I just again would go back to saying I would have liked to have transparency on how it landed up here and why is it in a different name? Because I want to give credit to Ms. Renita Wick's as well as Gogo for, for doing this event for our community. I think it's, like I said, it's great, but how do we get here? So, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Hernandez. Hey, can the applicant come up? And just kind of give me some insight on, on this, Growing Without Growing Opportunities? This is the first I've heard of it.
So Elizabeth Givens is, she is over that nonprofit, so I'll let her speak about what Gogo is. But Together We Can was a collaboration, so I wanted to explain that it's not Renita Wick's, it's not Gogo, it's multiple nonprofits and organizations who are trying to support the entire community. So none of the other nonprofits want to come forward because they would have to give up their, their waivers for wanting to use community buildings as well. This isn't a fundraiser, no one's making money. This is all the organizations in the community giving back to the community together, which is why it's Together We Can, not Renita AUSA, not Gogo, but all of us. And before Elizabeth starts, I just want to read this because I, I spent a lot of time thinking about what spirit of the giving is, and I just want to talk to you about the profound impact of spirit of giving in our community. The essence of giving transcends mere charity, embodies compassion, unity, and hope, which is what our community needs. And when we support each other, we create a stronger, more resilient community, which is what we need. Investing in the spirit of giving fosters a sense of belonging and encourages individuals to lift each other up, whether through volunteering, donating, or simply offering a helping hand. Just that simple act of kindness is what is going to grow our community and bring us together. And I'm just urging our, our city to support that. We need that. You have families struggling more and more, and right now, we have more agencies outside of the city and down the hill trying to support the city of Barstow than city of Barstow. And we need you guys to come together and support us, because spirit of the giving is trying to feed over 250 families, because we know kids at Thanksgiving, school is out for a week, some of them won't get food because they rely on free meals at school. We're trying to give clothing. We're trying to provide resources so they know where they can go when they need the help. That's spirit of the giving, and that is what Barstow is, a giving community. So I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Elizabeth, but I just need to get that off my chest because I feel like this community needs to hear it, but they also need to feel it and they need to see it from our leaders and those who are able to do it.
Hi, I didn't expect to be speaking today. I usually prepare what I want to say in writing because I have anxiety issues. So I've been trying to just speak from the heart and try to, you know, hopefully put a pin in the issue that's going on. I, I feel kind of like bad, I feel like Marybel is being attacked a little bit, like that's just the energy I felt, because she does a lot of work, and it's very, very difficult. I can only imagine what she goes through in a day's time. And then you referenced that you did speak with her earlier, so I think that some of the conversation that was held here could have been hidden private. But again, you made some valid points, right? Like, you know, there's some things that could have went differently, but the goal ultimately is to continue an application that was already established. My agency stepped in, we had a meeting, it came out that they needed the support, and I was more than willing to give it. Gogo is established here in Barstow. We relocated to Main and 7th, we have headquarters now. We do provide residential services as well, lots of supportive services to the community. We're looking forward to collaborating, and this is really just a big collaboration. The city does have homework bound, and in the future, we want to see that expand as well and offer these types of programs, offer these types of resource fairs or programs to the community that involves us all together, coming together to serve the community. So I think in a sense, it's kind of something that the city is already interested in doing. However, a group of us nonprofits have come together to make sure that this year it actually happens and we provide in an open, beautiful space, services, resources, giveaways, things that we know for a fact that those living in poverty, they do not have access to or they do not know is available to them. So this event will not only service them for the day, but it's also going to give them the opportunity to learn what is available to them, what they have access to. So it's just a positive thing. I hope we can all collectively agree. You know, I apologize, we all apologize for anything that we may have done incorrectly. But I don't want to beat up Marybel, I don't want to beat up anyone. You guys work really hard at all you do, and I can only imagine, you know, sometimes you know, things aren't perfect. So I think we can make it smoother in the future, but I hope that we can get it done today. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Givens. And I don't want you to think that, I just wanted to better understand what the project was all about, and I'm pretty sure there are a lot of other folks that probably wanted to know. But we just want to make sure that the process is done correctly. That's, that's all. And that everybody has a fair shake in making sure that they understand, I didn't know you was collaborating, but it would have been good to know that two organizations was coming together, and it would have been in the write-up here to where I would know that, hey, this is not just a new application, this is a combination of two applicants coming together to put this on. That's all it is, okay?
It's a bunch, well, I do, I just apologize because there's an error on our end. It starts with us and our application, right? And Ms. Rose, you made a comment to say, like, you know, hey, if this would have been done like this, we would have known. Very good. I, I agree with that. And I, I agree that that should have been something you guys talked about before we got here so that it would already be determined, and that publicly you could say collectively, like, hey, we had questions and we want you guys to know that we discussed this ahead of time, and now we understand and want you guys to come up and further explain what we now have collaboratively, you know, understood in private. I just think that, I just don't like to get the energy that someone is, you know, kind of being berated. I felt that way even with the other presentation, with the gentleman, when you talked to him, kind of just like, don't beat us up, you know, we're not perfect, just a little more supportive, that's all.
Got you, I understand.
Okay, so I just want to say that, you know, when, when I ask the tough questions, it's not attacking anybody. It's called accountability and transparency, okay? And I did have a conversation with Marybel this morning, and she said we would have the discussion here at this meeting. She agreed to that. So I just want to be very transparent about that, okay? But the business of the floor of the council should happen here. Everybody talks about closed-door sessions and all this other stuff. There's a reason why we have closed session, but when it's on the agenda, we have, we have an obligation to discuss and ask the hard questions here with the general public. And so basically, it has nothing to do with you, Ms. Givens, or anybody else that put the applications in. I just always have said, I don't want to set, set up any application, applicant up for failure. If they're struggling on filling out the application, we discuss this, we should have a workshop. It's just being transparent and, and setting boundaries and accountability. That's it. I give them props for what they did. Mr. Alva has a wonderful staff, but.
I think it's what you say, sometimes it's how you say it. So it could be just a delivery, but God bless you. It's just the way we hear, it falls on the ears.
All right.
Right, so it's just basically talking about asking those questions. We need to know the answers. Thank you.
Any, any other dis?
There may be public comments.
Yes.
Excuse me, Mayor Protam?
Yes.
This is Councilmember Cruz. I, I would like to say that I also had questions, but I also did call and speak with Marybel Hernandez today. Marybel definitely clarified just my basic questions. I want to thank though, all of the 501Cs, all the nonprofits that are collaborating together to bring these services and the, and the, and letting the community know what is there and what is available. So I, I had questions, but they were very basic, and when she explained why the process, and maybe for future, it would be something that if they see that something, an application maybe need a little bit more explanation, they can just relay that to the applicant, and they can put a little bit more information in. But like I said, Ms. Marybel answered all of my questions, and I am just really happy to see that we have so many of our 501Cs that want to work together to give back and give all the knowledge out there to the community. So I, I thank them for that. I thank all of them for that. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Cruz. Do we have any other public comments?
We do not.
No public comments on this side? No public comments on this item, okay?
No, I only wanna make a motion.
All right, please do.
To approve.
And I will second.
I'll second.
Perfect.
I got a first and a second. Ready to vote?
Councilmember Cruz, how do you vote?
Yes.
And the motion for item five has passed unanimously.
All right, thank you. And we're gonna move on to another pool item, number seven, except the, of the Department of Toxic Substance Control Office on the Brownfield, uh, Community Reservation Grant, Revalidation Grant, okay? Uh, Councilman Rose, you pull that as well.
Thank you, I pulled this because I just wanted to, um, you know, hear from this, from the staff about this. I didn't want it just to be, you know, pushed through in consent, to give us a little explanation of what this is all about and the good things that it's gonna provide for the city of Barstow.
Um, so, um, good evening. Uh, I'm going to actually toss this one to Genesis Crank, she's the one that worked on this grant and, uh, obtained it. So she has all the details and she gets all the kudos for, for accomplishing this.
Thank you, everybody, excuse me, I'm used to being on that side. Let's see, okay. Like Mr. Hildreth said, everyone, my name is Genesis Crank, I am currently the city's Planning and Community Development Administrator. Um, I actually, I wanna thank Ms. Rose for taking the time to, to let the community understand this a little bit deeper, cause some folks may have honestly seen a recent newspaper article covering this recent award, going into some detail, but, um, the, the feedback some took away from it, I can see there's a little bit of confusion. So I wanna make sure that we're covering exactly what this grant means. So as stated, this grant was applied for, um, on, as the city, we applied with the Department of Toxic Substance, Substance Control, and more specifically, their Office of Brownfields. Um, I won't go into the technical definitions of brownfields, but to make it, um, basic terms, it essentially means that based off of past uses on a certain property or anything like that, um, I'm actually gonna hop right into one of our, our locations. You'll see in the attachments included with this item, some city-owned parcels surround the privately owned, what used to be golf course. We all know that the golf course has not been in operation for quite some time, but I do wanna make that differentiation. It is not necessarily the old golf course site that we applied for, we applied for, again, in the exhibit, you'll see surrounding parcels that are owned by the city. So the reason why we included those particular parcels in our application is because, again, the site used to be used as a golf course. We're pretty confident, um, well, we know pesticides were used, different things to keep that grass as green as it once was, uh, likely affected those city-owned parcels. So that is one site and one application that we submitted specifically for the golf course sites. The other application, and that's another differentiation I wanna make sure is highlighted tonight, you'll see that we were awarded in total $700,000, however, that comes off of two separate awards. So the city submitted two applications, which is why in Exhibit B, you'll see other locations, including the old Barstow Community Hospital site. That one's pretty self-explanatory, likely had some hazardous materials stored there at one point in time. Um, and again, wanting to make sure that we are evaluating those sites. So I won't go too much further in the actual parcels, but to give some context on what this grant will do for the city. What we, and I don't wanna take all of the credit because luckily, we are working very closely with our current economic development consultant at Local Equity, who actually brought this grant to our attention and got the nod from the city to go after this. So myself and their staff are working together, um, to get out, well, we've already wrapped up what we call the RFP process, so Request for Proposals, on what is honestly the most important step of this particular grant and the monies that we were awarded, to complete what we call Phase One Environmental Assessments. So these consultants are gonna come in, they, uh, they have databases beyond what the city even has to kinda get a feel for what previous uses were done on all of these sites, just so that way they can get an idea of what they might be looking for and what they might find. Granted, we don't know what they're, they're going to find, but they're in the process of doing all of the groundwork, all of their research. Um, I've been tasked with digging through some very old permits to compile that for them, so right now, they are in the phase of gathering all of the info that they can, and once that is all gathered, they would move forward with, again, those sites near the old, uh, the old hospital site, near the old golf course. From there, they're gonna turn over to the city and say, okay, we've tested this, we've sampled that, here are, here are our results. But ultimately, the end goal on the city is to either, of course, either retain our own properties or sell them to a developer, and at the level of development, being able to confidently state that we, as a city, have already completed some pretty tough Phase One Environmental Assessments, and that the site is ready for development, it'll make development coming in that much smoother and quicker. So in all honesty, we are looking to get these sites tested, doesn't have the guarantee that we would sell, but we do have the option to, and the flexibility with this grant, we can actually choose to sell during the grant award period. So should we start having some really good conversations with folks about some of those parcels, once we wrap up this environmental, um, investigation, we can sell the parcel. We, we are not bound to keeping it just because they are ours during the two-year grant period. Um, but again, that, that's all circumstantial and entirely up to the city, of course, the council would have a say-so in it as well, but overall, the 700, $700,000 award allows for the city to not only start these environmental assessments on the parcels we've included in this application, or excuse me, the staff report, we can actually ask to add additional parcels. So the other side of things that staff are doing are trying to not only look at city-owned parcels, but any privately owned parcels within city limits that we believe might be considered a brownfield. So that way, we can go back to the Department of Toxic Substance Control and say, hey, out of our 700,000, we still have 200,000 to work with, and we would like to add X and Y sites, if applicable. But right now, like mentioned, the parcels included in the two exhibits are the parcels in focus and of main concern currently.
All right, good. Thank you.
And Mayor Protem, if I could emphasize one point, with great thanks to Ms. Crank on this excellent grant opportunity, just in case anyone didn't hear the point that she made, and wanna emphasize it, any potential future sale will not happen unless and until it's approved by the council after public discussion. But this is a great opportunity to get some state funding to help us look at revitalizing these sites and bring them back to, to bear for positivity for the community.
Okay, thank you. Uh, at this time, we're gonna open, any further discussion with the council? Uh, at this time, I wanna go ahead and open it up to public comments.
We have no comment on item seven.
Okay, all right, I will now entertain a motion on item number seven. Oh, you gotta come to you? I don't have that, I don't have that, you, okay.
No, I, no, I wanna compliment my planning department for being proactive, cause we, as a council, have been, um, accused of not being, uh, going out for economic development, and, and that is not necessarily the truth. Um, and so I appreciate that Chris gave Genesis the opportunity to show what we are doing, because those properties are excellent for developers to provide housing for our community, which we greatly, uh, need. So I wanna thank the staff, and having been a planning commissioner, you picked the right properties. And I like the idea that after we've done our part, that if a private individual has a hazardous, uh, property, that we can, uh, give a helping hand, so that's truly a plus. So thank you very much.
Not a problem.
Thank you, Jen, thank you, thank you. All right, ready?
I'd like to move to approve this.
I'll second.
I got a first and a second.
Councilmember Cruz, how do you vote?
Yes.
And the motion for item seven has passed unanimously.
All right, thank you. Moving on to business items, none, and public hearings, none. At this time, uh, general non-agenda public comment, this is the time and place for general public to address the governing board on matters not on the agenda or within the city's jurisdiction. Speakers are asked to limit their comments to three minutes or less. All requests to speak must be received prior to the agenda item being addressed. If any special accommodations are required, 48-hour notice must be given to the city clerk. All right.
Also, before we, um, go on to our, uh, comments, um, Councilmember Cruz has left the meeting at 9:13, but quorum is still present.
Okay. All right, public comments?
Also, before we start public comment, I have one written comment from, um, Mr. Hernandez that I have been asked to read out to the public, and it will become part of the public record for tonight's meeting. This is Mike Hernandez from Barstow, California. You need to vote, this is Mike Hernandez speaking from my home due to my disability and support of Mrs. Hernandez for mayor, not because she is my wife, but because she is the best candidate. She has the experience and integrity that has proven her dedication to Barstow to improve our community and get things done. We have both dedicated ourselves to create a better Barstow with deeds, not words. She has seven years as a planning commissioner, 10 years on council. I, I have a point of order, please.
So historically, the council has not read public comments that are received written, they're simply filed.
Thank you.
During a portion of the COVID era, the council read public comments, and then the COVID era ended, so I would defer back to the majority of the council, whether to just accept the receiving file of the written comment or allow it to be continued to be read, but I would defer to the council majority.
I'd rather just receive and file.
Absolutely.
I don't wanna change the dynamics if we, this is what we've done in the past, let's continue doing it.
Then it's a receiving file with, we'll, we'll take an extension, abstention perhaps, given the subject, so be receiving file and continue to oral public comment.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Um, further public comments?
Yes, our first speaker is Annie Fuzey.
Good evening. I'm Anna Fuzey, Vice President of the Barstow Senior Center, and I actually came to say thank you to Barstow City for the great job that Tom Alva has done, and, um...
Just a minute, just a minute, hey, can we, can we keep it down? Go ahead, ma'am.
Anyway, to thank Tom and his crew and the city for, um, replacing the HVAC machine, uh, HVAC?
HVAC.
At the Barstow Senior Center, we really appreciate, and appreciate working with Tom, he's been great working with us. Um, in addition to that, I wanted to make sort of a correction, say a few things. At the Senior Center, we actually provide 1,200 mills to the surrounding high desert and serve hot mills at our, uh, senior center as well from 11:30 to 12:30. That's from a grant that we have from the, um, excuse me, from the, um, Department of Aging and Older Adult Services. So we've been doing that for quite a long time, and it's not called Mills on Wills anymore, it's called Home Delivered Mills. Mills on Wills went bankrupt several years ago, and then we took over the Barstow Senior Center, and it's now called, um, Home Delivered Mills. So I think that's it. And we will be having, um, providing holiday meals, Christmas and Thanksgiving, look for that in our update in our Barstow Senior Center, um, website. And, um, hot mills are for anybody in Barstow. Um, we do ask a $4 donation, but we don't monitor that, we don't stand there and say, did you put your $4 in? So we have probably 70 to 80 people a day that come in Monday through Friday and receive a hot mill. Thank you, thank you again to the city.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Mr. Tim Silva.
Welcome, Mr. Silva.
Thank you, Mayor Tim, council staff. I'm glad to see that the, uh, council has continued the dignitary meal prior to the parade. However, in the past, the council paid for that meal. If four of us participated, we split the bill by four. If five of us participated, we split the bill by five, but the council paid for that. So I have two questions about this year, because someone made the decision for the taxpayers to pay for that meal. This is not a city event, this was something the council set up a long time ago, and the council paid for out of their pockets, so, uh, two questions. Who made the decision for the taxpayers to pay for that meal? And what, uh, fund paid for the meal? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Silva.
Our next speaker is Catherine Wrinklestetter.
Good evening, Council.
Welcome, Kathy.
Thank you so much, I appreciate it. Um, I really don't need the microphone on, I got a loud mouth.
Please use the microphone so it's captured through the tapes.
Got you, sir. Um, thank you. Um, I was here last meeting and, and referenced the public safety, and thought about it, thought about it. Still, my ring doorbell goes off constantly, it hits past 55 miles an hour. You can get an app on your phone and you can check people's speed. I don't need to be a police to check people's speed. And every time someone comes to my house, they're like, phew, look at that person, phew, look at that person, phew, look at that person. So it's still, I have, there's nobody that's been caught on our road, on Rimrock Road yet that I have seen that is speeding. My recommendation is to have, have a flashing, um, stoplight or stop sign or a light on Rimrock and Agaretta, I think that's what's called Agaretta, it's the street bef, uh, two hous, three houses before you get to the county road, okay? So some people don't know that Rimrock Road turns into county and city. Also, by the way, the city side is paved, is not paved very, not paved, uh, it's, it needs fixed. The county side on that road, on Rimrock Road, going towards, uh, Home Depot, the county's better than the city side. So why can't the county and the city get together and make Rimrock Road from the city to the county and the city side make it better, cause there's potholes there? And when you hit the pothole, the car doesn't sound very good on it. But, okay, going back to the safety situation, um, on 247, Barstow Road is still a highway. Did we run out of red paint, uh, paint for the curbs? Did we really run out of red paint? Well, I'm tired of seeing people parked there when the elderly people, and I don't mean to be rude, are almost smashing into these people that are parked there. The firefighters and the police department and concerned people should be parked there for, for emergency events, not to sit there and, hey, bro, let's fix your car, or hang out with somebody and make a traffic incident going on. It's constantly there. I, as a citizen, saw a shopping cart on Barstow Road, cause people push that there. Went home, walked all the way to Rimrock Road, got that shopping cart, pushed it all the way back to Rite Aid. Everybody was like, are you okay? Are you, are you poor now? Are you the same? No, I'm doing on my duty because the old lady almost hit the shopping cart on Rimrock Road. Please paint 247, the curbs again, please paint that, I really appreciate it because that helps. And please put flashing lights, please something for Rimrock Road. It's a danger to society, to our community and society. There's kids, oh, Halloween, real fast, can we have the police, please, 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 park at Garnet.
Thank you, ma'am.
Our next speaker is Ms. Tiffany Gibbons.
Good evening.
Good evening, Ms. Gibbons.
I am a community benefit member, the CM likes to slander and mischaracterize. I am disappointed and disgusted how this committee has been put together and misran. One of my biggest concerns is Maribel Hernandez requesting $50,000 for the emergency fund that doesn't even exist. When I asked her face-to-face about this fund, she lied directly to our faces. Was this fund approved by the financial director? Absolutely, but it was not. She marked down that they were a 501(c)(3), she marked down that the shelter was a 501(c)(3, and they are not, that is misleading. Easy solution to take Maribel off the committee and remove her application. When I went to Cody and I made him aware of this, he went to the CM, and the CM did not make that decision. Instead, he added two more city employees to this committee. Conflict of interest is four city employees, three employees requesting $285,000, one city clerk service manager deliberately misrepresenting of facts and information as fraud. Embezzlement is intentional misuse of misappropriative funds or properly entrusted to an official's care. These funds were predetermined by the CM and Maribel. The staff recommended, recommendations were already filled out. Our input was not required, considered, or even valued. The CM has handled, hand-delivered these applications to the Humane Society as well as the seniors. He even took building inspectors to inform them what was wrong with... He even took building inspectors to inform them what was wrong with their buildings. Nepotism, giving unfair advantage. I have literally outlined your employees' common types of corruption in your local government. The question is, what is the city council going to do about it? Continue to look the other way? Four women sat in the audience at a policy meeting and watched your CM disrespect Barbara Rose, mocking her, snickering at her, rolling his eyes at her while she asked pertinent questions in a policy meeting. This was completely unprofessional, rude. Tonight, they let them know, Maribel's exact words were, there is an application deadline, but we really don't stick to it. Then why was it that Megan Cardenas called three weeks ago and asked for the football team, and you guys told them the community benefits fund was closed and she could not apply? These are the messages that the community is getting. Barbara Rose has been asking the tough questions, and instead of teamwork, she has been completely disrespected and solely the only member asking these questions to the CM who gives limited information on how to get you guys to vote. Transparency? Your reality is this, your staff is a reflection of you, how they treat the community, how they respond to the public, and how they represent the city of Barstow. What your CM has done with Maribel Hernandez and her abuse of power, abuse of power, her lying boldly to the public, what else is she getting away with? How will you hold both of them accountable? Their track record with the shelter and the Humane Society speaks for itself. Now the community benefit speaks for itself. But again, it's everyone else but them. Barbara Rose is a councilperson, Linda from the Humane Society, Terry Tank, meet with the community benefits. When will all of you start looking at facts? Abuse of power in leadership involves blackballing, public criticism, and ridicule. Misuse of power is primarily based on deceit.
Ms. Terry, thank you.
Transparency.
Our next speaker is Mr. John Harris.
Welcome, Mr. Harris.
Okay, greetings, Mayor Pro-Tim, council, and especially Mr. and Mrs. Barstow. First, I give all glory to the beneficent mercy of God. Now, that puppet show I attended at Barstow College the other week promised that what was done in the dark would be brought into the light. They tried to sell it by using words that always excite greedy businessmen and politicians, words like growth, expansion, significant investment, jobs, and all-around prosperity for everybody. But they, but all they managed to accomplish is to expose possible collusion between Santa Fe and our senior leadership and possibly anonymous others. I don't know if, I don't know if anything illegal occurred in those relationships. But that depends, but that depends on the motivation of the parties involved. If the plan was, was to clear the town to avoid some life-ending catastrophe, that's one thing. But if the, but if the, if the intentions, if the motivation was a personal aggrandizement, then that's a job for the DA. All I know is that there are some important things that the people of Barstow ought to know that I still haven't heard yet. Like what about the increased traffic? Greatly increased noise, displacement of people, changing the landscape of the city, becoming an attractive nuisance to every itinerant gambler in Southern California, becoming a target-rich environment for hookers, pickpockets, and flim-flam men. You have to, excuse me, I don't have my glasses. But I'm doing the best I can. But anyway, to break it down, you know, what we have going here is something that we need more information on, and people have to be transparent, like the young lady said. There's no transparency here, and we need to know what's going on because the most significant thing that was not said is that who's going to pay for cleanup, to finally clean up that flume of poisoned water coming here from Hinckley? Thank you. And remember, don't vote for any incumbent because nobody, state, federal, or local, has done a job for the people well enough to be reinstated. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harris.
Our next speaker is Mr. Leonard Williams.
Welcome, Mr. Williams.
Thank you, sir. I have two questions. The first one is with the increase in the amount of work that public work has been doing in the past two months, and we all know why, but it's been an increase. How has that impacted the budget of public works? Are we spending more than we normally do? Which I don't think anybody anticipated in June, in May, in April, when they were doing the budget, that, that increase of work that they have been doing these past two months was going to happen. And how is that going to affect their budget in the long term? And it's something that I think we need to know. Are they going to come back and need more money or what? And that's something that we need to know as, as a public and everything. So that's the first thing. I just, we just need to know how much money, extra money are we spending to do this? And secondly, and Mr. Silva brought it up on Saturday. We had the parade, and we had the parade dinner, which is usually sponsored by the council. One of the issues, and I found this out today, you know, I am the Lieutenant Governor-elect for Division 36 of Kiwanis. I'm not even invited to the dinner. But one of the questions I had was, why was Mr. Brand, who is running for an office, allowed to be in that dinner? I can understand, Councilwoman Rose, she is the sitting councilwoman. Got it, there's no issue with that. But someone who is running? If that's the case, then everybody who was running should have been there. How did that happen? And it's, it's an embarrassment to the city, and it's an embarrassment to Kiwanis because they look at that dinner as a Kiwanis dinner. It's not. It's the, it's the council's dinner. And, you know, Kiwanis is going to get blamed for it. I'm just putting on the record that we had no idea that Mr. Brand was going to be there. I don't know who invited him. I'm pretty sure the invite did not go to him. But something we probably need to look at. And, you know, it was kind of a slap on the face of a great day. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Williams.
Our next speaker is Mr. Ted Wiesma.
Welcome, Mr. Wiesman.
Thank you. On October 9th, I noticed that a fence was cut in the back of a piece of property, and two people were going in and out with items. I called 911 and reported a burglary in progress. The word I got from 911 was that all the police are doing other things and can't show up to catch a burglary in progress. Call was made to 911 an hour later, asking if somebody would show up. They said, no. Called again at 8 o'clock at night, see if anybody was going to respond and get more information. No. Couple days later, people were going through that back-cut fence, and things were disappearing again. It was called in. It seemed that dispatch didn't think it was important to send a police officer. Two other times during that day was called in because it went on for a long time. Absolutely no response. That's all I got to say on that subject. I'll let you think about it and consider that crimes in progress are not being taken as something important for the police to investigate. Today's the 21st. There's been absolutely no response from the police to follow up on anything. You know, I've been robbed many times. Matter of fact, last time was over $500 worth of tools taken. But why report it to the police? Just doesn't seem that there's caring from our police department for people in Barstow. My other item is Sternicle Park, which is a park down at Riverside. The restroom door is missing a doorknob. Last time I was down there, the toilet in that side was plugged up. The water fountain was leaking. There's holes in the park. The court for basketball hasn't been cleaned in a long time. This is a park in a poor neighborhood, which I've mentioned before about that neighborhood, and it seems to be completely ignored. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Wiesman.
Our next speaker is Ms. Marcia Wiesma.
Welcome, Ms. Wiesman.
Welcome. This is a difficult thing for me to read in what I just watched. However, you may not shut me up. This is my public comment. I was given a letter to read about and made public with all the paperwork completely filled out by Mr. Hernandez at the last council meeting. And I will be reading his letter. Matthew and Maribel, you will not shut me up tonight. All right, Coach, I'm ready to go. You need to vote. This is Mike Hernandez, and I'm speaking from my home due to my disability in support of Mrs. Hernandez for mayor, not because she is my wife, but she is the best candidate. She has the experience and integrity that has proven her dedication to Barstow to improve our community and get things done. We have both dedicated ourselves to create a better Barstow with deeds and not words. She has seven years as a planning commissioner, 10 years as a council member, and over 40 years as a community activist. She has earned the right to be given the opportunity to bring Barstow forward into the right direction where everybody was heard and given the opportunity to prosper. My questions are to you, council. What is the city's policy for using a proxy to speak for a disabled, homebound citizen? Proxy speakers have been used and allowed in the past. In fact, they were used just recently in this last council meeting, three or four months back. How things now changed? Michael Hernandez has filled out the paperwork in advance. He named me as his proxy, and I was unable to read the letter at the last council on 10/1/9/24. Public comments. The city manager, Matthew Summers, and his substitute city clerk, Maribel Hernandez, waited in the last moment to tell me I could not read Mike's letter. This was unfair, unjust, and just plain wrong. They took away Mike's freedom of speech under public comments with his chosen proxy. They discriminated against a homebound citizen. Mike and I did not deserve this kind of treatment. It is just wrong. Both of them owe Mike and I an apology. After the meeting, we were going, I was going to submit a copy to the city manager, and he said, I will put it in the record. Sadly, it was not done. Tonight, our city clerk started to read Mike's letter as an agreed. You saw what happened. Matthew, I'm ashamed of you. Do I need to call your supervisor again? Thank you for listening, and good luck.
Thank you, Ms. Wiesman.
And good luck, Carmen.
Our next speaker is Mr. E.T. Snell.
Welcome, Mr. Snell.
Politicians are like diapers. They need to be changed often and for the same reason. And that's why, get these good glasses on. You know, this council has really done some horrible things. Number one, I'm a public access producer. And to take my right to film a meeting and to take my tripod is in violation of the Brown Act. And I have a letter from the First Amendment Coalition. Matthew, did you get that letter? That email I sent you? Hello? Duh. Hello? Did you get my email? He wants to burn the clock. Matthew, how did you, how did you, in God's name, take the Marriott, who's crowded every day, needs no help, and take a $2.5 million deal that was already approved and give them another $2.5 million at the Marriott? Remember that? You okayed that. That's why you got nothing to say. You know, they say he's a, he's a, he's a savant. I think with his mentality, I think it's obvious that he had no moral structure in approving the Marriott, and I think he's an idiot savant. And we all know what that is. But the Brown Act generally, the Brown Act provides the right to record. The bottom line is government code. So we've let that go on. We've let the Marriott, $2.5 million, that would have been a warming shelter. Matthew, you can live with that one, right? All the people, homeless people, without a place to sit comfortably. But you had to okay it for, for your boss, show how intelligent you were, how stupid you were with no morals and no compass. Now, if this, if this council wants my approval and want me to get off you guys, you guys could take right now, tell this moron or this savant to go reverse the Marriott deal. That's $2.5 million, there's three of you right now. We could do it right tonight and start in and turn that thing around because you guys have the vote. And I think there's legal preference and for people I've talked to to turn that deal around. So you, you know, Carmen, Mr. Nobles, and Barbara Rose, you guys need to take and do a little coup and turn that around and find a legal way to get that money back because that was a giveaway. That should have never been given away. And you go look at the Marriott right now, and they're packed full. They no more needed that than the man in the moon. I thank you for your time, and I'll be voting, I recommend voting for Tim Silva and Mr. Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Snell.
Leonard Williams. Thank you, for what it's worth.
Our next speaker is Mr. John Williams.
Welcome, Mr. Williams.
Kind of sad I didn't get the clown's endorsement. Wow. You know, I'm pretty upset, I'm pretty pissed off about Rodney Brand Jr. being at that dinner. I'm more pissed off that you guys use public funds. Mr. Summers, I do believe you may have a misappropriation of funds being done. And please don't tell me it's going to be some kind of a promotional thing that you try to promote because it's not. You use public funds. You guys know what happened. You know how it happened. What the public doesn't know is that Mr. Rodney Brand Jr. was at that event. Now, before you say he was a guest, the mayor already brought a guest, so it couldn't be his guest. So that means he had to be there as a special endorsement or a special person. Not good. When we have to sit back and take that stuff as candidates, it's a problem. I'll go back to when the city manager said I was demoralizing the staff. I took that as a personal issue. My question is, was he speaking for the city when he did that? And did you attack? And did you attack a candidate when he did do it? Now you're giving a candidate a special place, because if his picture shows up or they hear he's there, they're going to think he's a special person. What you did was, didn't care. Now, some of your staff did. I ain't going to mention no names, but they had issues with it, and that's a problem. When you do things like this, it makes us all look bad. How in hell can you take public funds, do a party, and not share it with anybody else? Only one person from the community was able to go to that party on our money. Think about that. Our money, not yours. Mr. Summers, will you ask for an investigation on that? Will you look into that? Will you bring that up and say, "Hey, we need to look at this entire mess of how it happened"? Will you ask the mayor why he brought him? He was a driver. He was the mayor's aide. He was appointed on the planning commission by the mayor and others. What, you're going to make him District Four? No problem at all? Just stick him right on in there? It's embarrassment. Our money. You could have fixed a pothole, one, but no, you didn't. And how come you didn't bid out the services for the food?
Thank you, Mr. Williams.
Our last speaker is Mr. Jim Brown.
Welcome, Mr. Brown.
Good evening, Mayor Pro Tem, Council. Jim Brown, Barstow. There's a lot of stuff said tonight, and accountability. Mr. Noble, Ms. Hernandez, you two going to be here after the election, and the other three, we don't know. But y'all have not held anyone accountable in the four years that y'all been here. And that's a shame. Four years. You let things get away. There's videos. Y'all seen it, and nothing happens. The people need justice when things get done, get messed up. With the police department, there's no justice. When it's caught on video, and that's wrong. So I hope that if the... We're going to get a new mayor. That's for sure. We're going to get another new District Four person. I don't know about District Three, but y'all need to be held accountable. Hold these people accountable. Don't let them get away with stuff, because y'all see it. Because I've been heard that, Mr. Noble, they want to recall you. They want to recall you, Ms. Hernandez. So I'm saying, please, come December the 2nd, when the new council comes in and things happen, you two, do your job. Do your job. Hold these people accountable.
Thank you, Mr. Brown.
We have no more comment.
Okay, thank you. We can go into status reports. City manager's report is in the package. Council committee report. Barbara, you want to start off? Carmen, you want to start off?
We'll start with the committee reports. I have a Javier Quality meeting on the 28th, and we're having a street committee meeting on November the 6th at 5:00. I would appreciate, and you're welcome to attend, in regards to the speeding issues. I'm in complete agreement with that, and I would appreciate your presence so we can discuss the issue more thoroughly. The other... That covers it for me.
Thank you. Barbara.
Thank you. So just want to report out that the next Rules and Policy Committee meeting is going to be on the 28th of October... The 29th. That's Tuesday, the 29th of October, and we will be discussing topics such as the Community Benefits Fund. I think it's critical that if you are interested in where that money is going to go, to please show up at that meeting. It will be at 9:00 a.m. here in the chambers. And our Homeward Bound meeting, they did meet on October 9th. I was going to ask Councilwoman Hernandez to report on that. Unfortunately, I had a medical emergency and was not able to be here.
Right. We did have a quorum, which was the first time in a long time, and we did discuss the grant, the New Life Fellowship, and we also discussed there was a change in the law in which now colleges, universities, and churches can use their property to create housing. So we... Chris Hildreth is working with New Life Fellowship to look over possibilities that they have with their property. So that was one of the positive of our Homeward Bound meeting.
Thank you for that report. I do want to say that the meeting prior to that, our interim city manager had attended the meeting and had asked some questions. I did report out, he'd asked questions about a homeless coordinator that we've been trying to get for quite some time, and I'm hoping that we get some type of results, because I believe that that coordinator could really help with the homeless issues in Barstow by bringing all nonprofits together and coordinating and just be like one place where everybody can call, and that coordinator will disseminate the resources that we do have within Barstow. The next Homeward Bound Committee meeting is going to be November 13, 5:00 p.m. here in the council chambers. Thank you.
Thank you. And the only one I have to report out is the Victor Valley Transit. We had our meeting today. There was no issues for the city of Barstow, and our next Victor Valley Transit Authority meeting will be held here on the 18th of November at 9:30 in the Barstow Chamber. We'll move on to business of the council. Councilman Hernandez.
Well, I got an interesting telephone call in regards to our rental agreement. I got a comment that one received a telephone call in regarding to the process, and then another one got a letter, and they wanted to get inside the property. And I thought my understanding was, when somebody rents, they have possession of it, not the property owner. And I thought that had been resolved, so I would like for us to have a clarification on that, and why are some people getting a letter and some people getting a telephone call? I also got an email, a concern about a bus stop, which I have discussed with the mayor pro tem, an agorita. So if you will look into that, it's in a residential area, and they didn't understand the rationale why it's there when the businesses are really, you know, Dollar General and Rite Aid are more on rimrock, why they're going through agorita. And I... And the other thing is, the person at home had a trip and fall. My husband, Mike Hernandez, and he's been out of commission since August the 24th. I want to thank everyone that has asked me about his health, and he finally is home, and it's 100% difference, as we all know, if anybody's been in a care facility. It's quite from one extreme to the other. And his parting comments to me were, "To tell you all, he'll be back. Just give him a little time to recover. It's not over, and he is serious about you getting out and vote and getting involved in our community." There was a comment made about collaboration in our community. Has always existed. It's a shame when we don't talk to each other or make assumptions, because the senior center has always had the holiday meals, and I volunteered for years in distributing them. So I hope and I welcome that they want to do that event at Coral Harper, because that just adds to the collaboration. But we do have the community services, so I think that we too, as a city, need to inform the nonprofits, all of them, that they exist and what they do, because at one time, we did create a list, and it was the 2-1-1, so I'd like to see follow-up on that. And I would also like the police department to look on, look into that issue that was reported by Mr. Wissam. Why wasn't someone sent? That's unbelievable. When something is in progress, that's when we should be responding immediately, and that that should happen, and for the length of time. That really concerns me. I think that covers it all. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Rose.
Thank you. So, Mr. Hildreth, you're in charge tonight for the city, correct? So I'm going to direct these to you. I would like for the city to reach out to Megan Cardenas for the promotional funds, because she should also be welcomed to put in her application, not be shut down, and she, I believe, is with the Barstow High School Band Boosters. We need to accept her application and put it forward, ensuring that she has completed it. If she needs the help, that the city staff help her, so that we can also spread the love on these funds to our high school students. I also have received a lot of phone calls, not only within my district, but within the city of Barstow, in regards to the bus stops that are popping up everywhere in the residential areas. I have a couple of residents in my own district that have said that this green bus, it's the transit, that are speeding down our residential areas. And a lot of these areas, like Arbor Way, are very narrow streets. When you have the residents parking on the streets on both sides, and we have a bus speeding down, and now they're popping up everywhere, I think that we need to find out why they're popping up in residential areas versus areas like where the Dollar General is. We already have one on Montero by Walmart. I hope they're not popping up to show that they're... Because it's fund-generated, that, you know, I don't know, but I hope that they're not just popping up to show we have all these stops, and they get additional funds for those stops. But I'd like to know the answers, because we have a lot of residents that are extremely concerned, and we, as a council, should be extremely concerned as to why they're in... Right? Why they're in residential areas. I personally don't believe they should be there, but I don't know why they're there. For instance, at Arbor Way, the residents at Arbor Way paid for their street to be repaved. They paid for their sidewalks to be redone. This was a while... Quite a while back, but we probably know what year it was. They paid for them, and now this bus company is going in and tearing up their sidewalks to put their posts in. So we need to look into that, and I'd like to get a report back on what's going on with that. I also would like to ask... Now, I asked about this a while back, and I'm going to ask again. I have not seen the update for Measure Q committee members and/or the vacant seats. Measure Q was voted in by the people with the understanding that we would have a resident oversight committee, and I would like the update at the next council meeting. And I do need a second, but I believe I had a second. For... To get the update on Measure Q committee members, because we have a couple of vacant positions, some that are coming up. And so not all districts are being represented right now, and that's a concern, because again, Measure Q was passed with the understanding that we would have that oversight resident committee, and it's not fully staffed as far as the committee, and I'd like to get that report.
I believe that was supposed to come back. I thought we did do a second on that to bring that back, so that we'd identify who was on.
Right, and I think the last time we talked about it, the only vacancy right now we have is...
Is mine.
Ms. Johnson's, yes. And like Mr. Noble and I had a conversation, because he had somebody that he thought he wanted to put in that vacancy. Now, the other seats, there are some that are going to be coming due here at the end of the year, but a lot of it, the way the policy is written, is the council member has the option of actually appointing somebody from their district to that seat, and being that we may have some individuals that will be here or not be here, and also some of the existing committee members still want to continue to sit on the committee. So that's going to be an option. That's something that we'll have to bring forward to you, possibly at the meeting in December, to see if you want to allow these members to continue to sit on that committee or if you want to seek to have them replaced.
Well, then, that's, you know, because we were... I wanted to report, and thank you for that, but I like it in writing, and if it's going to be something like we do, the planning commission vacancies, that should be on an agenda so that we can make those decisions. And how long has Ms. Johnson been vacated? How long has she vacated that?
She's been gone for, I would say, almost probably a year.
Absolutely. That's what I was trying to get at, is that why has it taken us a year for us to fill that vacancy? We're not meeting our obligations for the resident oversight committee. Our voters expect it. I expect it, and it... No vacancy should go a year. No vacancy should go two months. When a vacancy occurs, I want us to be proactive versus reactive on filling these vacancies, because the representation should be for each actual district. So if we can get this going for the next meeting, if it needs to be an agenda, I would need a second, because we need to start the process.
Yeah, can we put it on the agenda?
We just need a second.
Yeah, second.
And then we've heard three, so there we go.
Thank you. I also want to quickly reach... Give kudos to everybody that participated in the Mardi Gras parade. It was a beautiful event. All the communities, again, showed up. I would like to see, and this is just me, we have community benefits funds, maybe that one, it could be another fund, but I would like to see where we bring the schools back, included. Our own high school didn't participate in the parade, and in order to bring the spirit back to Barstow, you know, if we could think outside of the box and maybe give so much money to each school, granted, they would have to do all the, you know, the accounting and stuff, but so that they can create a float, because I'd like to see more floats at this parade. I know. Thank you. But I also want a Christmas parade. I really want us to do a Christmas parade in the daytime, and that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Just a couple of things. The community promotion funds, can we... I would like a... I like everything, the policy, the dynamics of what we're supposed to be doing with the community funds, because right now, I'm getting a lot of understanding, not understanding, what the community fund is used for, who can use it, and what are the parameters of that. So can we bring... I like each council member to get a copy of it, and let's sit down, and let's discuss exactly what this is supposed to be. And let's sit down and then let's discuss exactly what this is supposed to be used for. It's a community fund, so we should be doing it for a community. Anything that impacts the community, then that's what those funds should be used for. It shouldn't be used for internal stuff that we have Measure Q for, or we have some other funds for, or general funds for. It's a community fund that was given to us to utilize to do community project type stuff with. So let's figure out what that is and let's put some A through Z, exactly what they are so that everyone knows who can submit for these community funds and who cannot, who should not. Because they should be submitting them for something else, maybe for Measure Q fund. And they may fall in that category versus a different category. But I think all the council members need to get a copy of this so that each of us know exactly what this community promotion fund is intended for and so forth.
There's two different community, I think the only one that we have a policy for is the community promotional fund.
Promotion fund, correct.
And then the other one is the benefits, which we don't have a set policy, which is one that.
And the benefit fund is the one I'm conferring to.
Right. And then that's one that Councilmember Rose made a recommendation to take to Rules and Policy to set some standards so that we could proceed with the applications.
Okay. But do we have any, anything now? We don't have anything right now.
No, we, so we have the application. So going back to Ms. Cardenas, I think Catherine may have reached out to her or spoken to her. And the response we've been giving everybody who submitted an application or even now is that, I mean, we're, it's on hold until the policy is set and then that way we can proceed with the applications once, once the policy is set.
She was asking for promotional funds though. And that's not, we just speak for that tonight.
No, I know, but I thought.
Mayor and Council, we're veering far into a direction on an item not on tonight's agenda. My suggestion is if the Mayor Protem would make it, as I've heard, a request for a council workshop on the community promotional fund and the community benefits fund, with a second that could be scheduled. Or just the community benefits fund and not the promotional fund.
Benefit fund.
Benefit fund. So with a second, we can schedule that.
I would gladly entertain that because we do not have parameters and the funds were almost spent. Thank you, Ms. Willhoe, for putting a stop to that. They were almost spent and so we really do need to have a workshop. The policy is going through rules and policy and at this workshop, maybe we as a council can look at that because, because the policy should have a mission, a mission from the other council.
Yeah, but you're going into my time.
Sorry. I was answering him. Sorry about that.
What I wanted is a first and a second.
Give him that.
You got a first and a second.
That's what I wanted to clarify.
I apologize.
And the last thing, Mr. Williams came up and talked about the, the impact of the folks at the Public Works and doing all this work and stuff and coming up, how has that impacted the budget and so forth? And if you can give me some.
So in, in Public Works, that's what me and Tommy were looking at. Public Works has technical supplies of $170,000 that was budgeted for this fiscal year. They've, as of the date that, could you pull that date real quick? Today's date, they've spent approximately $13,000 of those funds, which is 8% of that budget as of today. So there's still approximately $157,000 left in that fund that we use to repair sidewalks, bring in, pay for concrete, bring in subcontractors to, to perform work like tree trimming, all that kind of stuff. So all this stuff is budgeted for. Obviously, whenever, and we try to budget accordingly to where you try to stretch it for the year. But the problem is, is that, you know, whenever we start to get low on funds, then we would start to pull back on, on doing that, obviously, is, is how we would account for it.
All right. So, so long as we, we're tracking it, make sure that, you know, that we are tracking this moving forward because I want to make sure that, that we capture everything that we possibly can and that we have the funds to do it and we're not pulling it from something that we don't need to be pulling it from. And I think that's the last thing I had. If, if there are no further. City, city manager, meaning the city attorney, the, the workshop, yes.
The community benefits workshop.
Workshop, yes.
What I would envision, if the council so directs, is that we have the Rules and Policy meeting first. Rules and policy, choose on, works on a policy. That then comes to a council workshop for all five council members to consider.
Okay.
That's the order of operations that makes sense to me.
And when are we going to do the Rules and Policy meeting?
I don't know if it's scheduled, the next Rules and Policy meeting is next Tuesday, the 29th.
It should be on that agenda.
So then, if the council directs in this moment, it's on the agenda on the 29th for Rules and Policy. And then it would come to council at a future meeting.
Okay. And then we can look at a future meeting on that.
Yeah.
Okay. If there are no further questions, we are adjourned at 10:08.